Okay, we're live councillor.
We're live, right. Well, good afternoon then, everybody. I can see that all the members of the committee have dialed in, but just to make it clear, that's myself, councillor Keith Evans, councillor Chris Carter, councillor Adrian Collett, councillor Judith Gorowski, councillor Keith House, councillor Roy Perry and councillor Stephen Philpott. So, thank you very much. And we're supported by the officers and I see Carolyn and I see Jack on my screen and others along the bottom. So, we're all present and correct as we would be in the shoot room as normal. I do have to state formally that the meeting is being held remotely and we're attending via video conference and being livestreamed and will also be available for repeated viewing. I've named the members who are in attendance for the public record and during the meeting, if you wish to speak, please indicate that to me by pressing the little hand symbol and I'll try and make sure that everybody gets called. And Kevin has just reminded us of the voting method, which is the chat facility. And if it comes to a vote or when it comes to a vote, we can vote through that. And Keith, if you're having problems, say yes or no and we'll capture it. The standing orders continue to apply. Please keep your microphones muted unless you have been called to speak. And please remember that you may be visible on screen at any time, even when you're not speaking. I think that's all the introductions, isn't it? Oh, chief executives just joined us, welcome.
Thank you, chairman. I was here all along, but clearly hiding on your screen. Thank you, chairman.
Oh, I see. Right, thanks. Now, apologies for absence, there won't be any because we're all here. Decisions of interest, I think we need to declare those as the debate takes us into areas where we feel we have a declaration unless somebody wants to say something. Right, confirmation of... Now, something just happened there. So, if everybody could just make sure their microphones are muted, that'd be good. I've got the next item is the confirmation of the minutes. Is it acceptable, everybody, that I sign the minutes as a true record of the last meeting? And to save ourselves time and effort at the end, there is a confidential minute which we don't have to discuss in open, but would it be your wish that I sign that as well? Is that acceptable, everybody? Great.
Yes, agreed.
Thank you.
End up.
Good, thank you. Deputations, I haven't received any notice of deputations. So, that moves us on to chairman's announcements. I've got a couple of things which I wanted to say. This is Kevin's last meeting supporting us. Marie Manville's going to be taking over. So, I'd like to thank Kevin for keeping us on the straight and narrow for many meetings and hope that you find the next meetings that you service as enjoyable, assuming you have found this one enjoyable.
Thank you, chairman.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to say is that this is our first opportunity as the Employment in Hampshire Committee to consider the efforts that have been put in by our staff through a very difficult time through the COVID-19. And I'm sure that the right thing to do is for us to record straight away, thanks to all of them who have gone not just the extra mile, but the extra many miles and sometimes in great difficulty to see Hampshire County Council through the pandemic. Hopefully, we are coming out of it, but there is still a lot of impact taking place. And a lot of people would not be as comfortable in Hampshire as they are now had it not been for our staff going the extra mile. Yeah, I see lots of nodding heads. Chief, oh, chief executive.
I just think, chairman, if I may briefly, thank you very much indeed for the comment on behalf of the officers and I'll make sure those comments from the committee are relayed. It has been a very difficult time, also a very inspiring time occasionally, but I do know staff very much appreciate the recognition from members in these terms. So, I will pass the message on and thank you very much indeed.
Now, thank you. Right, that was the chairman's announcements. The next item then is the Hampshire County Council Annual Workforce Report, which is in a different style to those we've received before because Jack has done it her way and it is a very major report. So, what I suggest we do, Jack, because to take the whole report in one go would be impractical, would be if you would introduce it perhaps section by section and then we can pause and ask if there are any questions or points that people wish to raise.
No problem at all. Thank you. Okay, so the committee are asked to note the new format of the report, the content of the report and also the next steps that are contained within the report. As the chairman has just said, it is a long document with a lot of detail in it. So, I will walk through it section by section. If you turn to Annex 1, which is page 15 on the mod gov document, that's where the report itself starts. It is worthy of note that whilst the COVID-19 response falls outside the timeframe for this report, I will actually draw it to our attention at various points as we progress through the report, since it's pertinent to do so. I'll start on page 17 with the executive summary and I'll also cover the overview of the organisation at the same time. So, I'll do those two sections together and then pause before we move on. So, the report provides data up to and including March 2020. This year, the report follows a typical employee life cycle for the organisation. This is helpful because it is a useful means of analysing and understanding our workforce in more granularity. The data comparisons used in the report are either a six-year trend, so from 2014 to 2020, to correspond with our transformation cycle, or specific points in time or compared back to 2010 to show trends since the start of the government funding reductions. Other main changes to the report include the addition of more inclusion and diversity data. This is to support our drive to be a more inclusive organisation and we feel that the act of including this data demonstrates our inclusivity in and of itself. This also therefore mitigates any requirement to produce a separate equalities document in the future as required under the Equalities Act. And this has been confirmed by our legal colleagues that this is appropriate to do so. At the top of page 19, you see a summary table of key data. I'm not going to cover that now because we will break it down and come on to it in later sections. And then in terms of an overview of the organisation, this section just sets out the makeup of our organisation, referencing the extended nature of Hampshire County Council. It recognises that we're a high-performing organisation and are proud that our workforce share our commitment to meaningful outcomes for our service users. Recognises our commitment to engagement with our staff and the principles that underpin that. And it also describes that we have three staff networks, a BME network, a disability network and an LGBT+ network. I'll pause at that point.
Members, any questions on what you've heard so far? No? Oh, Judith.
Yeah, so I did raise my hand. Are you not using that?
I just saw it, so I've got it.
Oh, okay. Yes, if I can just scroll back. First of all, is there a legal requirement to publish all of these data in the public domain? You're muted. I've not said that to anybody before.
Jack, we can't hear you.
My little handset didn't work. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. So, there is a requirement to publish certain data sets in relation to the diversity of our organisation. This does report, this report does go further than the legal requirement.
Right, no, that's, that's good. I'm all for putting as much in the public domain as possible. And, oh, now, sorry, my agenda's just flipped. Sorry, if you could bear with me, I'm just looking for my notes now. 18. Yeah, the, we've gone over the bit about special recognition payments that comes within the paragraph you've just talked about. I just wondered why therefore the calendar year and not either the municipal year ought to coincide with the annual employee reviews or appraisals?
So, I believe that's to do with the way that we've collected the data previously and to enable us to make trend comparisons. I do come on to those in more detail in later sections.
Fine, thank you. I do have some questions, but they are going to be expanded on later, so I'll keep them for then. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Perry, Roy. You're muted.
Right, yeah, no, I'm blocked there. We've got those three staff networks. I ask the question at this stage, do we have a network for pensioners, for retired personnel? What links do we have with people who've worked for the county council, retired? And what provision do we make for them?
So, we don't have a formally recognised network for previously employed or retired personnel. I don't personally know if there are any other formal or informal arrangements for that community. I don't know if any of the other officers are aware. Chairman, chairman, could I perhaps assist? We do actually have a pensioner representative on the Pension Fund Panel and Board in order to ensure that all of our pensioners have representation in that particular forum. Thank you.
Is that what you had in mind, Roy?
Well, yes and no. A good employer would certainly, many good employers do have groups for their pensioners, former staff. And I would have thought at some stage we might give some consideration to that. Not necessarily now, but I think it's something I would expect of any good employer to do.
Can we capture that, Jack?
Yeah, I have done, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Collett, Adrian.
Thank you, chairman. I was interested to hear that we have an LGBT network. I presume that's rather different to the others in that it's not the sort of area that we would collect data on, either because it's not required and perhaps in many respects not practical. Just like to hear a little bit more about how that works.
So, we do encourage, so there is an ability for our staff to, to record data about their sexuality on the, on their personal data. We encourage people to do that, but it is not data that is accessible to all for obvious reasons. And obviously, it's not a mandatory requirement that people do complete that. We do encourage it just because we believe it's part of being a truly inclusive and, you know, well-engaged organisation. But ultimately, it is individual preference as to whether they do so.
Okay. And do we use networks like that to help with the management of the organisation, like consulting them where there's a policy issue?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we have regular meetings with the chairs of all of the networks formally. They are included in our work around inclusion and diversity as you would expect, but also from a people perspective, a HR perspective, if we are reviewing policies or looking to understand the implication of a change in process or policy, they are one of the groups that we would engage with to take their views and perspective.
Okay. Any further questions on these sections? Chief executive.
Thank you, chairman. I just want to check, I won't be stealing any Jack Slater thunder if I just make a mention of the Black Lives Matter issue.
No, that's fine.
So, I just wanted to also add for members that since this report has been developed, obviously, much consideration has gone on nationally and globally about the Black Lives Matter movement and its implications for society generally, but also particularly for large public service organisations, employers and service deliverers such as the County Council. I think we've made good progress on inclusion and diversity issues in recent years. And that progress is, has been extremely helpful on a number of different fronts, including with regard to that previous question, which is all important, about using the networks constructively and supportively to help us to make sure the organisation is doing better in terms of its employment responsibilities and its service delivery responsibilities. But we've engaged also in what at the moment is a wide but informal conversation with, in reaction to the Black Lives Matter movement outside of the organisation, if you like. That's been a very constructive and informative conversation already and is certain to lead to a review of certain elements of the inclusion and diversity plans that we have in place already and which are being referred to in this report. And will, that will happen both informally and more formally. And I expect it to redouble some of our efforts in a constructive and positive way, both on behalf of our BME colleagues and service users, but also, I'm sure, in ways that will spin off into other parts of the action plan. So, it's just to refer that to members at this stage and that I anticipate more work will follow in the next few months and will build into the next version of this report in due course because it will be a very continuous story. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Right, anything else on these sections, members or officers? Right, Jack.
Okay, thank you. So, the next section is headed up our people and it starts on page 21 of the mod gov document. And in this section, it's an overall summary of the, of our workforce data. And as I said, I'll pause at the end for any questions specifically. So, in table 3.1, this shows a comparison of our workforce by grade reflected both in terms of headcount and FTE. You can see that our overall workforce remains below the levels of 2010, in fact circa 10% lower. As in previous years, there is a continued reduction at grade D, but increases in grade C. This is linked to the changing nature of work with increases in automation, for example. The workforce, the rate of workforce reduction is greater at senior levels, so H and above than in other grades. And it is worthy of note that significant portion of our service, including senior managers, are wholly or partly funded through shared services, partnership working or other traded services arrangements. And as in previous years, there continues to be more part-time workers at lower levels, so particularly grades A and B. Overall, there's been an increase in circa 100 staff in the past 12 months, which is linked to increases in HCC care, children's social worker roles and transferred services such as Portsmouth Chronicle Service. The remainder of this section takes a high-level look at the diversity of our organisation as follows. And in doing so, is compliant with the Equalities Act 2010. So, in terms of gender, the majority of our workforce continues to be female, with a significant proportion of those also part-time. In terms of ethnicity, we have circa 94% of our staff who have declared their ethnicity or told us their ethnicity. Around 86% of those classify themselves as white and around 8% classify themselves as BME. That's a very small increase on last year, which is reflected in the graph at 3.11. This is positive when we consider it against the Office of National Statistics data, which tells us that 5% of the Hampshire area, excluding Portsmouth and Southampton, are from a BME background. Table 3.10 shows us how the 8% of our staff are distributed across our grades. So, we can see that nearly half of them, of those staff are in grades A to C, which are our lower grades. It's worth noting just, just briefly here that we do understand that the COVID-19 pandemic has had an impact, much has been talked about in the media and more broadly in terms of several groups of staff who might be at greater risk because of the pandemic. And obviously, we continue to work with our staff networks in, in relation to that. In terms of age then, this shows that we have a fairly even distribution across the departments of those over 25 years of age, but significantly less employees below the age of 25. We don't know, yet know if this is meaningful, but we intend to monitor that over the period to come. Further analysis shows that this pattern is more profound amongst our BME staff group. So, with only 1.5% of those being below the age of 35. Again, we don't know why that is or if that's meaningful to us as an organisation, but we will continue to monitor. And again, age is another factor that we know has had an impact in terms of COVID-19 and level of risk. And I refer more to age in later sections of the report. Terms of disability, the number of staff who have declared a disability is increasing with 3.6% having now declared. This doesn't necessarily mean that they are new staff. It could just be existing staff that have now reported a disability. We don't know how many of our staff have a disability overall because not all staff have declared, if they do or if they don't have a disability. But we can assume that there are other staff that have disabilities that they haven't declared, since we know that nationally around 19% of the working age population is expected to have a disability. I'll pause at that point for questions before I move on.
Thank you. And I see that councillor Gorowski has got a hand raised. Judith?
Yes, just, I think, three points. In paragraph 3.3, it talks about the increase in children's social worker roles. Could I, I ask within this meeting, are we getting close to the number of social workers that we need in children's services? Do you want my next question or do you want to answer that? Or then we'll move on. Gives me time to scroll down, you see.
Um, I don't have particular data on me at the moment. John, I see, has put his hand up, so he, he may have some more specific data. I know that the children's social workers is one of the roles that we keep a, keep a close, close eye on. John may have more specifics for you.
Okay, chief exec.
Thank you, chairman, and thank you for the question. I think it's, it's a moot point of a question because it's a very difficult point at which you can say categorically that you've got enough of any part of the workforce, particularly in areas complicated and sensitive as children's services. But we substantially increased the number of children's social workers on our books, on our books formally in recent years as part of a strategic approach to reducing the numbers of children in care positively rather than simply by blocking the doors. And that strategy is part of our transformation to 2019 and also to 2021. And that's proving very effective. In previous offsteads, we've always been notable for having manageable caseloads. So, that's a further indicator that we have got the balance about right. But we know, of course, that also caseloads depend upon demand and demand varies. We can expect and we're starting to see an increase in traffic, if you pardon the expression, into children's social services, following a delay caused by the COVID episode and the, the, kind of the, the reduction of access to universal services. So, it's something which is kept under continual, continuous review by Steve Crocker and his team. But the closest I could say in answer to your question is a yes, councillor.
Good, thank you. Substantially and increased with the two words that I took from that. So, that's good. My next question is on paragraph 3.8, where the report refers to BME groups. We seem to have lost the A for Asian. BAME stands for Black, Asian and Minority Ethnic. I think it should go back in.
Yeah.
Sweetness, please.
So, thank you. Specifically, our staff network refer to themselves as the, as the BME network, which is why we've adopted, which is why we've adopted that language. Organisations use both and often both interspersively, but I'll take away your comment and very happily discuss it with them.
I mean, this, this report will be read or could be read by anybody outside the organisation. Therefore, I think we need to use the correct terminology. And, I don't know if I have anything else at this point. Hang on. Yes, on the young people and getting young people to come to work for the county council, we're obviously targeting through social media and so on and apprenticeships. But do we actively engage with education leaders? Do we go and do the school fairs, for instance, at 16 before children even, or young people even make their choices about what they're going to do post-16?
I think it's very specific to the types of roles that are being recruited and the specific departments that are doing, are recruiting. So, I think it's certainly something that has been used in the past and would be something that could be used again in the future. But it wouldn't be something that we did consistently for all posts. It would be about specific need and how we attract into that particular workforce.
I think, I mean, you know, I'd be interested to know what other members think about this. But coming to an organisation as large as Hampshire County Council, there are a lot of opportunities. And the job you end up doing may be not very different, or maybe very different from what you started. But, you know, to get your toe in the door, a lot of opportunities are then opened up. And I can think of one senior manager who, I think, came after university, thought he'd stay for two years on the programme and 20 odd years later, he's still here because of all of the opportunities that were presented. And, and he's been able to develop within the organisation. So, I think this is something that perhaps is, is worth stressing or, or putting in front of young people when they're deciding on, on careers and what they might do in life.
I think Karen Williamson has come in presumably on that point. Carolyn?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, just to agree with councillor Gorowski, yes, absolutely. There are roles that are very, very pertinent to our younger workforce and the first entry. For example, our Integrated Business Centre, if you look at the statistics of the age profile within that part of our operating model, we have a large proportion of the under-25 age group where we have entry into those roles as a first job, either directly from school, directly from college, in the gap year before starting university or after university. And what we can see is a third of a turnover each year within that area. And that's a positive because many of them move on to continue their careers within a two-year period in promoted posts and/or in other posts within the county council, or indeed they go on to further their education, having had some experience of working that's perhaps given them an idea as to what they want to do with the rest of their, their career. I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, yes. Hopefully, we can keep the people we want to keep and make sure we give them opportunities so that they, they don't actually leave.
Absolutely, we aim to do that. Thank you.
Right, I've seen two other hands up. I saw first Adrian Collett and then Roy Perry. Adrian.
Thank you, chairman. Three points, if I may. First of all, to say I actually agree with the point that councillor Gorowski made about BAME. I, I think it's a more inclusive term and it's rather taken over from BME, which is an older term. So, I would hope that's something that our own organisation would want to move to as well in time. I'd like to refer to the chart in paragraph 3.10, the headcount percentage of ethnicity and across the workforce. Can I, before I make this comment, just say I think this is the best report I've ever seen of our workforce. It's an excellent report and anything I say is not a criticism of the quality of the report. I think it's been very good and very well laid out. But when I was looking at this, I was looking at the distribution of BME or BAME staff and it was hard to work out how they distributed in comparison with the white staff because what we've shown is the actual total percentage, which of course is tiny compared with the percentage for whites. Just wonder if there's any chance of an extra line or something in a future report?
Yeah, we do, we, we did collect the data in both, in both ways as you're, as yours describing. So, yes, certainly in future reports, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. The, the other thing was relating to disability. And, okay, we've got an increased number of people registered as or declared as having disabilities in our workforce, which is, is good. I wonder if that's a combination of some people who are less afraid to declare it because they recognise that as a workforce, that's not a negative. And it may be that for some, to some extent, it's an increased aspiration from people with disabilities to expect to be in the workforce. But it's still a very low number compared with the proportion of the population. I recognise, Jack, what you said about people who may not be able to work and so on. But it seems to me those are both things we should be finding. But it seems to me those are both things we should be finding ways of encouraging, particularly the aspiration side, that someone with a disability shouldn't write themselves off as not being able to get into the workforce and have a positive career. And the more they visibly see people doing that, the better.
Agreed, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Adrian. Roy, councillor Perry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if this is the right point to raise it. But in analysing our staff and background, do we have good figures on what proportion are EU citizens? And are we satisfied that all those staff that are EU citizens are happy with their settled status after Brexit at the end of the year?
Yes, so we do have that data. I don't have it to hand at this moment, but we do have that data. And in previous committees, we have been reporting on that data regularly and can continue to do so. So yes, we do have that data and we continue to engage with them to ensure that they know the up-to-date information as it's been made available around changes in status, et cetera. And in fact, only last week or the week before, we contributed to the Migration Advisory Committee, who were seeking input from large organisations about particular elements of our workforce and how changes are impacting on us. So yes, we have the data and yes, we are actively monitoring that and reporting on that.
Well, thanks, and I think it's important that we should. I mean, I don't know what the position is with care workers, but obviously some organisations are beginning to get quite worried that they may be losing. Is that a factor that causes us any concerns?
So that is part of, so there are some particular groups of staff where we know that we have higher reliance on EU nationals. Care workers is one of those groups of staff. So we have particular approaches to recruitment and retention, et cetera, to pay attention to that fact. And it is one of the things that we have referenced in our return to the Migration Advisory Committee, because the changes to the legislation in this space mean that the lower paid workforce have less accessibility to roles in the future. So and one of those concerns is around care working. So we are picking up on that challenge, yes.
Okay, well, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, that we will get those reports presented to members. And certainly just for information, and I can't name names, but I have had at least one member of staff come to me really quite concerned about settled status and just how this will work out. Again, I think it's a good employer. We ought to be in a position to do what we can to help those members of staff.
Yeah, agreed.
I saw Carolyn's hand go up, and then I've got councillor Carter.
Thank you, Chairman. It was just councillor Perry to give you the information. I had the opportunity to quickly go back to the October EHCC report whilst Jack was providing you with an update. And EU national statistics are three point six percent of our workforce, of which a third are in adult health and care. So that's thirty five staff. Now, that is only new recruits since February twenty eighteen, because we've only been able to capture that data through the recruitment system since that point in time. So I hope that's helpful by way of an update.
That gives a scale, thank you.
Councillor Carter?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to go back to three point seven, declared disability. And it's interesting to note that that has increased in percentage-wise by around one percent a year for the past two years, which would appear to coincide with a much higher profile for mental health. Now, is that, you do indeed refer to that later on in the report, in next steps, at the end of the report, when proposals for dealing with mental health. But mental health, of course, is very much a hidden disability, with many people reluctant to declare it. And I'd just be interested to know how we actually deal with it. And it's a very personal matter, and not everybody wants to say that they have a problem. So is that relevant to the statistics we've got that have gone up in the last two years by around two percent? And how do we deal with it? I mean, it's so personal that it affects in all departments.
Yeah, so we opted not to include in the report, because there's a standard list of conditions for which people can report their disabilities against. And actually, it becomes very, very granular if you look at it in that much detail. But obviously, some of the mental health disabilities related to mental health are absolutely part of that. So they will be absolutely recorded in that three point six percent where staff have declared it. We can assume, I would need to look at that level of granularity over previous years to see whether there's actually been an increase in those particular disabilities. So I don't have that data on me, but we are capable of looking to see that. One would assume that there would be a link between the kind of, the growing, and rightly so, kind of awareness and knowledge around mental health. In terms of how we support, there are all sorts of ways. There's lots and lots of information on our staff, on our internet pages around wellbeing, specifically around mental health wellbeing. We've got an employee assistance programme, which enables people to reach out via the telephone and via an app to get support. Particular departments have specific offers of support to their staff, where their staff might be prone to instances of increased kind of stress and anxiety, for example, in adults and children's services. So there are lots of things that we do to support the mental wellbeing of our staff. But I think for us, like all of society, it continues to be an area where we are learning and growing as we start to understand more about the impacts of mental health on us as members of society.
Fine, thank you, thank you.
Those are the hands that I saw up. The question that I had, Jack, is that one of the reasons for collecting this data is interesting in its own right, but it also is a reflection of the objectivity of our recruitment processes. Have you any commentary that you want to give us as a relatively new person in post as to how well the recruitment processes are functioning?
Yeah, so I think as we come on into the next section, actually. So I think there's lots of really positive evidence about the attractiveness of our roles, which is partly to do with how we reach out and attract people to our organisation. And equally, in the section around resourcing and how we select people into our posts, so lots of positives. I think the area of disability specifically, I think, is one where organisations are maturing all of the time in terms of what support is appropriate to give people who are applying for posts, to ensure that the way in which we recruit is fair and equitable, but also doesn't disadvantage people with any particular disabilities or characteristics. So I think I'm really pleased with what I've seen, but I think it's an area where we can always look to grow and develop.
Okay, thank you. Members, shall we move on to the next sections? Jack?
Okay, so the attract section is absolutely about how we attract people to our organisation. So it's the sort of start of our employee lifecycle. And it's about how we appeal to the broader labour market. We now have a positive action statement of intent and inclusion and diversity e-learning for recruiting managers will be going online later in the year. Over the reporting period, we advertised approximately two thousand four hundred roles for directly employed staff, receiving in excess of twenty three and a half thousand applications, which is on average ten per role. Of those twenty three and a half thousand applications, we shortlisted nearly fourteen thousand people, which equates to recalling approximately six people for interview for each role. Of all of those applications and those shortlisted, the majority we received were from females, which fits with our overall general profile, gender profile of the organisation. In terms of age, the data is interesting. As I've already said, we employ significantly less people under the age of thirty five. But we actually receive in excess of forty percent of all applications from this age group. This would indicate that our roles are attracting within this section of the labour market, but we're not necessarily selecting them to fill our roles. Obviously, there are numerous reasons for that, but it would be interesting to understand it more and in greater detail. In terms of ethnicity, eighty two percent of applications are from white applicants and thirteen percent from BAME applicants. Broadly speaking, those percentages are reflected in the candidates that are called forward at the shortlisting stage. With overall workforce profile of eight percent, that would also suggest that BAME candidates are less likely to be selected, although are being attracted to our roles. And also, it should be noted that, as I've previously stated, the demographics for the Hampshire area are around five percent. So both of these are above that rate. In terms of disability, six percent of applicants have declared disabilities and a slightly higher percentage are shortlisted. This is still arguably less than the national representation and therefore points to our roles being less attractive to the disabled labour market. Of our advertised directly employed roles, nine percent were internal candidates, so those already employed by Hampshire County Council. An analysis shows that internal candidates are slightly more likely to be shortlisted, which in many respects is not surprising. Overall, this points to a positive picture of us as an employer, in my view. We continue to have recruitment hotspots such as care assistants and nurses, and have a range of tactics that we use to support attraction in those areas. It should be noted that Covid nineteen is expected to impact in the labour market more broadly, not necessarily negatively, but also positively in terms of the potential to have a larger labour market and therefore larger opportunities to attract into our roles. And as I've previously mentioned, we continue to monitor the impact of EU exit and are feeding into the national space as we are able to do so. I'll pause.
Any comments here, members? Councillor Collatt, Adrian?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to refer to paragraph four point eight and the chart there showing the number of applications received and shortlisted by ethnicity. And there is, I mean, most of these charts show things exactly where you would expect them to be, there or thereabouts. But there's quite a marked difference here in the number of BME people shortlisted as a proportion compared with white applicants. I made it about a ten percent difference. And I just wondered if we know why that is happening? Is it perceived language or accent problems? Or, you know, have we analysed this at all to understand why it's happening?
So we don't know why it's happening. So this year, as you'll know, is the first year that we've captured some of this data in the workforce report in this way. And I think the natural progression then is to say, so what is this telling us? What's the insight that we can gain from this? And what, if anything, do we need to improve or make changes as and where they're necessary? So this is one of the things that we will be talking about with the staff networks as we go forward.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you.
Yes, I think that's another side of the question about how objective our recruitment processes are. So it'd be interesting. Now, councillor Gorowski, Judith?
Yes, thank you. We're still getting far more women applying for jobs than men. We seem to have a shortage of men at Hampshire County Council. And I wonder if we should be doing something to address this imbalance? Saying, you know, I'm not saying let's have fifty fifty or something like that. But it is so different from the general population out there in Hampshire. I just think that we should be finding out why this is and seeing if we can address it, please.
Yeah, and I think some of the rationale behind why this is happening can be seen when we've reported on our gender pay gap, for example. So we still directly employ people into a number of roles that, for example, other organisations, other councils particularly, have outsourced. And we know that those roles are perhaps in our lower grades. And that we know that there are more part-time workers in those grades. And we also know that we have more female workers who are part-time than male. So I think there are a number of reasons why we are seeing this trend. But that's not to say that I don't disagree with you, that we should keep an eye on that and we should seek to understand it wherever we can. And if there is an imbalance that we feel should be addressed, that we should look to consider the appropriate steps to do so.
If I can just tease a bit more out of that, you said that we have more female workers in the lower pay grades and part-time work. And I think underlying that, I wonder if there's a sense that you feel that because women have more caring duties and parenting duties and so on, whether we should actually be making that assumption? Because I know men who have part-time work and have asked for flexible working in order to do childcare and so on. And I don't think we should just assume or make an assumption that this is bound to happen. Because, you know, people make their own choices. And some ladies have careers and their husbands do the part-time work and do the childcare. And so I don't think we should just say, oh, well, that's bound to happen because. And I think we're looking at it and looking at the gender imbalance.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to imply that we've made an assumption around that or that we're not interested in doing anything about it because of that. But the data that we report on in the gender pay gap tells us that those things are true for us as an organisation. So it's one of the ways in which we need to kind of consider. And I think you've made me think about it. It would be really interesting to see what data we have on, you know, how many people apply to work part-time and what's the breakdown in those requests in terms of gender and also in terms of how we approve or deny those requests, obviously, with an assumption that business need is part of that rationale, of course.
Yeah, I mean, just to come back, I don't think we should be aiming for false proportions, saying, oh, it's got to be fifty fifty. But the gap requirement is really quite significant, that's all I'm saying.
Yep.
Okay, that was the only hand I saw raised on that one. The question that has been sort of burning away at me, Jack, and I suppose it's tenuously related to this section, is the impact of Covid nineteen and more working from home and managing people through outputs rather than through attendance. Is there any commentary on that yet?
So, yeah, so we've recently undertaken a staff engagement survey of people who have been working from home during the pandemic. And we know that there are a range of issues at play for those people. Largely, people's experience appears to be positive. People feel that they are, they continue to be managed and have good relationships with their managers. We've been learning of some issues around equipment, chairs, technology, which we've been able to address. And there is also some feedback around social connections and interactions that people are missing. So we're looking at how, across the departments, do we support managers and encourage people to maintain those kind of social connections? Equally, we know there are issues around perceptions of when to take breaks and how to take breaks, and just having those little breathers from their work that we might ordinarily get because we walk between meetings, down corridors, or that we pop and make cups of tea and chat to our colleagues while we do that. And when we're working remotely, people are somehow feeling more tied to their computers, et cetera. So there's a lot of emerging information from the staff survey that all of the departments are currently looking at and seeking to understand, so that we can adapt and flex as this, you know, new way of working continues and progresses over time.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to press on to the next sections?
Yes, indeed. So resourcing, which starts on page thirty one of mod.gov. So this is about having attracted people, how do we then fill our roles? So this speaks to the range of ways in which we employ people within the organisation, whether that be permanent staff, agency staff, fixed-term workers, casuals or contingent labour, for example. The graph at five point three shows our workforce costs split between directly employed, whether that be permanent or temporary, agencies and casuals. Having a variety of resourcing options is critical in an organisation like ours, where we have multiple types of works and services that we offer across a wide range of service users. Most of our agency spend that's referred to is within the care and IT sectors of our organisation. And the increased costs that are referenced are largely due to factors such as the pay award and increased pension contributions. I'll pause.
Any comments, members? Councillor Collatt?
I just wondered whether Jack's last comment was relating to the increase within each year. It's interesting to see that within each year, as each quarter goes by, the total... It's interesting to see that within each year, as each quarter goes by, the total salary bill goes up. Is that because of pay awards and pension increases and so on, pension contribution increases?
I would imagine that on a year-on-year basis, those would play a part, but less so quarterly, quarter by quarter. I would need to look at the data in more detail that sits behind that graph to respond to that in any detail.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other hands. So, next section.
Okay, so this is onboarding section. So this is about how we welcome and induct people into our organisation. It starts on page thirty-three of your mod.gov document. And it's about ensuring that all of the people that join us are welcomed, essentially. So people obviously have contact with us as an organisation throughout the recruitment process, but their main experience of us begins as they join the organisation and in their early days of employment. As an organisation, we offer corporate induction as well as departmental inductions. And this report covers specifically the corporate induction delivered through the workforce development team. We've had over two thousand new starters complete our corporate induction, which is an e-learning offer in their past year, and that will have been supplemented by departmental inductions too. We don't currently seek feedback on our induction process, but I hope to start doing so in the future because I think it will be important to us in further understanding the experiences of those who join us. Worth noting that we know that COVID-19 is raising some questions around induction. So not in terms of the practicalities of it, because it's already largely virtual e-learning, but in terms of the nature of building relationships and establishing a network and suitable kind of buddies to partner with when you're new into an organisation, which are not impossible virtually, but they require a different degree of thought and intention, which we're currently exploring. I'll pause.
Yes, I mean, the obvious thing that COVID-19 and homeworking takes away from us is the watercooler conversation and just getting to know people. Do we have a way around that?
I think in different teams and in different departments, there are all sorts of ways around it that are emerging from the kind of social connections through to the more kind of formal, more disciplined kind of team meetings that are happening with greater regularity, for example. I've heard stories of, you know, where people have joined new, where they might ordinarily shadow somebody for a period of time. They're being invited to join virtual meetings with that somebody and have catch-ups with them at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day and those kind of things. So there are ways in which we are trying to do it. But it is inevitably different to the experience of physically joining an organisation and making new connections. And of course, as and when we return to the workplace, for some people, they won't yet have those established relationships to which they might be looking forward to returning. So there could be a degree to which it's daunting for those people because it'll be like starting again. So it's really interesting from a kind of social and people perspective.
Thank you. Any other member questions? Right, we can move on to the next section.
Okay, this is about develop. So this starts on page thirty-five of your reports. And it's about how we support our people to grow and develop whilst they are employed with us. So we've got a comprehensive learning and development provision for our staff. Like induction, much of that is delivered directly through departments. But leadership and management development is supported corporately through the workforce development team. And this report specifically covers that corporate leadership and management development offer. So we've invested four hundred thousand in leadership and management development during the reporting period, delivered three hundred face-to-face interventions which have been attended by in excess of three thousand staff. We also have approximately nine hundred different e-learning courses available to our staff, which were accessed in excess of seventeen thousand times during the reporting period. We have two development programmes available to our staff specifically, so Firefly and TLP, which is the transformative leadership programme. TLP is available to those grades H and above. And we deliver two cohorts in nineteen twenty, the year nineteen twenty, with a hundred and fifty-seven employees involved. And oh, I've lost my place. And we don't have access to a full suite of diversity data in terms of our learning and development programmes, specifically TLP and Firefly. But we do have included some data that is known within the report around BAME disabled and the gender split of attendance to those. Firefly is specifically aimed at grades E to G, and that runs twice a year with twenty-five places per cohort. We've received double the number of applicants or nominations to places available, which is really encouraging. And again, within the report, you can see some breakdown of the characteristics of those that attend those programmes. Really important to note is that both programmes have really high satisfaction levels, not just from a participant perspective, but also in terms of line manager feedback of changes in the individuals who have attended those programmes. And all of that data around evaluation and outcomes is reviewed regularly through the leadership and management steering group. Formal programmes, of course, are not the only way we develop our people. So we have the valuing performance policy is another way in which we do so, which is about the line manager conversations. We also provide acting up or temporary promotion opportunities as well as secondments. And of course, apprenticeships is another way in which we develop our people. And the report references two hundred and sixty-eight new starts on corporate apprenticeships in the reporting period. We are currently reviewing our leadership and management offer in light of COVID-19, particularly in relation to the extent to which we can extend the offer of virtual and e-learning in place of face-to-face, but also to understand where that face-to-face is essential and how do we deliver that in the future as we need to. I'll pause.
Members, I don't see any hands. Yes, I do. Councillor Grabski, Judith.
Yes, a couple of questions. Seven point four, leadership and management development. We obviously invest quite a lot in that. And I wonder, are staff evaluated just on performance? Or are they evaluated and appraised according to their transferable skills rather than the tasks that they carry out in their jobs?
So, yeah.
Are you all right? Are you with me? Sorry, just watching Carolyn and I wasn't sure whether she couldn't hear me or didn't get what I was saying.
Hearing your fine. I was just wanting to hear the end of it so that I could understand the question. Thank you.
So that's my first question. And my second question is, are we spending all of our apprenticeship levy?
Okay, so on the point around how we monitor performance of individuals. So valuing performance conversations will reflect both on the kind of practical tasks and work that individuals are doing as well as their behaviours, attitude, approaches to their work. So there will be both elements recorded and discussed in those conversations. The same in the leadership and management development. It is about the practical responsibility and task, if you like, of leading, but at the same time about leadership behaviours, management behaviours and how those are developed and how those are used and monitored. So I think the answer is both. In terms of apprenticeship levy, it's actually managed outside of my area. I suspect that we aren't spending all of our apprenticeship levy, but because many organisations find themselves in that position, however, we will be closely monitoring it. I can see that Carolyn's got her hand up and she may be about to rescue me with some more specific details.
Yes, it's a really good question. I can confirm that we are not yet using all of our apprenticeship levy and that is no different from every other organisation that's almost playing catch-up, as you'll recognise. What we did recently have approval to do was to utilise any unused across third sector organisations so that we can try and make sure that even if we can't use the levy directly, that our partners who are helping us deliver services to the public can use it. So we're trying all avenues to make sure that the funding stays within Hampshire and stays within the provision of services to the people that we are here to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, at this point, I think perhaps I should declare an interest as a governor at Eastleigh College.
Okay, thank you. Yes, if I remember correctly, on the apprenticeship side of things, we do get a separate report and it might be at the next meeting. And one of the problems that we've had in terms of getting all our money back from the apprenticeship levy has not been so much recruiting the apprenticeships, but having the courses available into which we can recruit our new people. And that's a long process, but I'm sure we will get a report shortly as to how we're making progress on this.
Thank you.
Right, Councillor Collard, Adrian.
Thank you, Chairman. The leadership development programme, I remember attending a session a year ago with Councillor Perry and Councillor Westbrook in the Ashburton Hall. And I think there were probably getting on for a hundred managers there who were, you know, developing their careers. And in fact, I note that the person who asked me the most difficult question has gone on to get an MBE since then. I don't know if that was connected. But are we still able to do those things during the current environment? You know, virtual leadership development programmes or whatever? Or is it the sort of thing that we've had to put to one side until times get back to more normal?
Yeah, no, so we did deliberately put it to one side for a period of time, certainly during the initial kind of response phase to the crisis. We've just had a discussion at our leadership and management steering group about how we start to turn back on that offer. There are certain elements of those programmes which it's obvious that they could still be delivered. So for example, things like coaching and more kind of one-to-one relationship and awareness-building kind of interventions, which in fact many organisations are doing on a virtual basis anyway. And we're currently reviewing of the broader content, how would we turn that into virtual without losing the learning outcomes? So we are reporting back, I think in September, to the leadership and management steering group with a further update. But it's also fair to say that the demand for those courses was obviously was obviously significantly impacted whilst people were very much responding to the pandemic and the recent months and all of the additional work that has been created as a consequence.
That's totally understandable. Thank you.
Okay, we move on.
Okay, so we're on Reward and Recognise, which is page thirty-eight. So this is about ensuring the efforts of our people are recognised. And it's important to note upfront, I think, that the informal ways we reward and recognise our people, as well as the formal ways reflected in the paper, are really important to our staff. We know that these are often valued in the moment more or at least equal to anything else that we might be able to offer, which I think speaks to the chief executive's point at the start of the meeting in terms of the appreciation shown for efforts during COVID-19. One of the formal ways, however, that we do reward and recognise our staff is through the valuing performance framework, essentially the conversations that people have with their managers. And we also have special recognition payments. During nineteen twenty, eight point six per cent of our staff received an SRP for exceptional performance. In addition, we also pay market supplements to people who are filling roles, there are thirty-five roles in this category, which we have officially recognised as being hard to recruit and retain. If we review our reward and recognition arrangements through a diversity lens, we can understand that more women than men are in our top five per cent of earners, which to some extent disguises the gender pay gap that we've discussed previously. That said, the rationale behind our gender pay gap is understood and linked to the majority of our workforce being female, particularly in those lowest grades, as I said, we've previously discussed. And the vast majority of our highest earners are white, with BAME representation in this group below the wider organisational profile. And disability data reflects that the proportion of disabled staff within our top five per cent earners is representative of our wider organisational profile. Again, it's likely that over time, COVID-19 potentially will have an impact on the extent of SRPs paid, but also potentially in terms of market supplement payments. But we will need to monitor that space over the coming months and years. I'll pause.
This is one really to the chief executive, I suppose. I would think that during the COVID-19 efforts that have been going on, there will be a higher proportion of our staff who might qualify for special payments simply through the efforts that they've put in. Are we going to be able to recognise all those who've done so well?
I think it's a fair question. It's a difficult question to answer at this stage, Chairman. It's one that is on the list for the corporate management team and then to lead members. We certainly want to make sure that we reflect upon and recognise the outstanding efforts. One of the difficulties that we'll have with that, though, is frankly, everybody I come across has been outstanding. And in genuine terms, the more obvious roles in care homes, which have been superbly managed and delivered by staff from all levels, mask some of the work that's going on in logistics, facilities management, IT that have kept us going in things like this, where people really have been working above and beyond, I could go on and on. So it will pose a challenge for us if we are to stick purely to the systems that Jack has been outlining this afternoon. I don't want to duck the question. I want us to address it carefully as an organisation, particularly as we move into the next phases of the crisis.
Yeah, okay. I've got Councillor Collard and then Councillor Phil Potts, Adrian.
Thank you, Chairman. It's page thirty-nine, the comparison on the gender pay gap figures. First of all, my mind boggled a little bit about how you work out the median gender pay gap in an organisation this big. That must have been quite challenging. Mean would have been easier. But it's the mean one I wanted to focus on. We've made some progress there, but it's astonishing how far away we are still from gender pay equality. And when you look at the bonuses, the payment of bonuses, we're still a long way away from gender equality. And looking at the structure of our staff and the higher number of female staff in higher roles, but also in the lower roles, I suppose that's the thing, isn't it? It's surprising that that gap is still so big. And do we understand really why it is and where we can go to close the gap?
I think it's difficult. So we understand some of the rationale behind the gender pay gap, which I have, which I've already discussed. And in fact, we have a more detailed report on the gender pay gap that we have to publish as a legislative requirement. We have conversations about this at the corporate management team. We have, you know, things like when SRP payments are agreed. We really encourage departmental management teams to really think about, you know, any biases in those conversations, about our expectations and about the full range of kind of diversity and the implications of our decision-making, et cetera. So there's lots that we can do that informs and influences in a general sense the way that we think about our workforce and the assumptions and perceptions that we relate to our workforce. But I think it's just, it's an area that we will need to constantly keep talking about and keep monitoring, for sure.
And one of the points we always make in this area is that as an equal payment employer, somebody who does a job on grade X gets paid the same as somebody of the other sex who's on grade X. But because we have a higher proportion of women in the lower grades, the way in which the calculation is done makes it look as if we have a gender pay gap. So we're very sensitive to the equalities issues here all the time.
Yep.
Okay, I've got Councillor Phil Potts, Stephen.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Much of what I was going to say has been covered, except I'm just a bit concerned about the wording in eight-ten because in eight-ten, it says the profile of our workforce can go some way to explaining the gender pay gap. But actually, I think the comment in eight-eleven is probably more accurate, where it says that the gender pay gap exists as a result of the workforce profile. So I don't think it's necessarily we're being fair to ourselves to say that the profile of our workforce goes some way to explaining it. I think the profile of our workforce goes the whole way to explaining it. And I think that's because, as I And I think that's because, as you said, chairman, just now, there is no gender pay gap on a grade-for-grade basis or individual-for-individual basis within the particular grade. So in that respect, we do not have a gender pay gap. Would you agree?
Well, if I can jump in there, it opens up a whole area that we have to examine. I mean, for example, do we adequately allow women who are returning from maternity leave to resume their careers? And do they ever get the opportunity to make up lost time? And so on. So it's a complex area and I don't think there's going to be an easy answer. So as I'm now floundering, I'm going to hand over to Jack.
Oh, no, I think it is a really complex area. And I think the only point to note that is really important is that the gender pay gap is very different to equal pay. So the fact that we pay people the same regardless of their gender for equal work is absolutely not what the gender pay gap is trying to monitor and record. So, and I think it's the reason why we've said some way to explaining, and I do understand both rationale is because of the data around bonuses, which is not really explained by our workforce profile.
Thank you. Stephen, do you feel that's been answered?
I don't really want to continue on the debate, chairman. I think we've probably had the debate a number of times before, but yes, I think so. That's adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gorewski, Judith.
Thank you. Just on 9.4, going back to the exceptional performance awards. The last line talks about increased scrutiny during moderation. Obviously, these awards have to be made objectively. But I wonder, are staff given targets for what exceptional performance looks like? Or is it a bit like the honours system?
I don't think, so very much the VP, the valuing performance policy is managed and led through departments. So there will be absolutely expectations set within departmental management teams around what exceptional performance looks like and around what poor performance looks like at the other end of the scale. So those expectations are clear and explicit and will be carried out through management conversations on an individual basis. And departmentally, those will be made clear at multiple opportunities throughout the year. Whether they are formally labelled targets as such is not how the system works. But those expectations of performance are absolutely explicit, is my experience in the short time that I've been here.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
I've seen no more hands, so let's take the next section.
Okay, so the next section is actually section nine, which is progress and perform. So this is about those conversations that happen between staff and how we identify exceptional performance and also manage performance or where it's under our levels of expectation. So again, valuing performance is part of this. We've already talked about rewarding exceptional performance. And as I've just said, we also very much do manage poor performance too. In terms of valuing performance, more women than men receive an SRP payment, though proportionally, more are made to men when you look at it through percentage terms. The number of BAME staff receiving SRPs reduced this year, but equally, there was an increase of SRP payments made to those where no ethnicity had been recorded. So it's very difficult to understand whether that's a definite shift in contributions, allocations this year. There's been a slight increase in SRPs for our disabled colleagues. Age has been looked at for the first time this year in relation to SRPs. And we can see that SRPs are mostly given to those between the ages of 30 and 50 and that those aged over 50 are more likely to be considered poor performing. We have a range of policies to help us manage performance and conduct issues. During the year 1920, we had 76 performance cases. The report contains more detailed information about the outcomes of those. And we had 163 conduct cases. Again, the report contains more detail about the outcomes of those. In terms of absence, this reporting year saw a slight increase in absence levels from 3.2% to 3.6%. This is still below the national average for the public sector, which is actually around 4.2%, but it's higher than the private sector. Obviously, an increase in our absence equates to an increased cost of absence. And we can see in the report that that has risen from circa 8 million to circa 9.5 million. There are 312 attendance cases during this period, 63 of which resulted in terminating a contract either through mutual forced or indeed resignation. In terms of grievances or workplace issues, we had 46 cases during this reporting year and the report sets out some of the detail in terms of how those were resolved. And rather obviously, we know that in the next reporting year, Covid-19 will absolutely have had an impact on our absence levels. But we will reflect that in due course. I'll pause before the final section.
Okay, I don't see any hands up. I think it's been noticeable during the discussion that we've had here that such is the culture at Hampshire, that we've actually been focusing much more on the carrot and less on the disciplinary stick, which I think is absolutely correct.
Yep, yep. So the final section then is retain and exit. So this is page 45 onwards and is about how we encourage those to stay and also where we learn from those that leave us. So the section sets out the factors that impact on people's decisions to stay or leave the organisation. And we know that those include things like our approach to health and wellbeing, reward and benefits, and indeed staff engagement. We also have mechanisms to support staff to move on where performance isn't aligned to organisational expectations or indeed to the individuals' expectations of role. The majority of our workforce stay between one and five years, but still many stay for much longer than that. When you look through a diversity lens, it's encouraging to see that our BAME and disabled colleagues, their length of service is broadly reflective of the wider organisational profile. External turnover is around 15%, which is healthy. It's slightly above the UK average, which is 14.6%, but is consistent with the wider public sector. And around 2,000 of our staff left the organisation last year, with 24% of those leaving within the first 12 months. At the moment, we are looking to see what more we can do around the exit interviews and learning from those that leave the organisation, particularly those that leave within the first 12 months to understand how we can learn and grow based on those experiences. And that is the final section of the report. The last element was just that details the next steps that have been agreed with the corporate management team and which the committee are asked to note.
Okay, to which we've added a couple of comments, haven't we, during the course of this discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, one of the things, and I suppose this again is for the chief executive, we have over recent years been able to thank long-service employees, 25 years and some do 40 years, which may be more difficult at the moment. Are we thinking in terms of still being able to thank them in a different way?
It may be a feature of my own age, chairman, but I'm still thinking in terms of thanking him in the usual way. I'm so wedded to that event in the Great Hall in October, November time. But certainly, once we have a better understanding as to the likelihood of us being able to arrange that event, which I think is feeling increasingly unlikely even in the mid-autumn, we'll come up with some other approach, which may be either to delay the event or to do something else. It is, going back to the earlier conversation, it is one of those events which I simply personally don't think you can do properly virtually. But we have it on our agenda and I'm grateful to you for raising it because it is, I think, one of the highlights of our calendar.
Indeed. Councillor Gorewski, Judith.
Yes, I was just going to say, in particular, the chief executive's speech, which perhaps people could join him on a webinar or something for his annual speech.
I am always interested in knowing what was number one 25 years ago.
I'm clearly becoming predictable. I'll have to change my approach from here.
Members, any further comments on this report? Because otherwise I'll move on to the recommendations. Well, the recommendations are that we're asked to note the new format and we're asked to note the next steps identified in the report, namely in relation to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items, coronavirus, delivery and inclusion and diversity action plan, delivery of the wellbeing action plan, development and implementation of the HR data strategy and ongoing consideration of the impact of the new EU immigration on attracting and resourcing with regular reporting to EHCC. Are we happy with those recommendations, members? And I'll take silence as a yes. If you could wave your hands or just let me know that all is well.
Chairman, I've put a poll in the meeting conversation as we, as expected. So if members could vote in that and make sure they click submit vote when they've made their choice, please.
Yeah, thank you. That was good. And I see three people have voted so far, four, five.
Gosh, this is like the Eurovision Song Contest.
Six. I wouldn't know. I haven't watched it for years, Keith.
I don't know. I was thinking about number one on the charts 25 years ago. I think 50 years ago gives better chance of recollection.
Okay, if everyone has voted, who wants to vote, we have 100% in favour of those recommendations. So thank you very much. And if I can say, when Jack went through this report with me at a chairman's briefing, I described it then as a tour de force. And I didn't say that upfront because it may have been me influencing the committee. But Adrian said during the course of this discussion, one of the best reports he's ever seen. And I agree with that 100%. So well done, Jack.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, and I see some thumbs up on that one. Right, the next item then on the agenda is pay policy and legislation update, which is Jack to introduce again.
Yep. So much shorter paper by comparison and it updates on the National Pay Award and also the proposed employment-related legislative changes. The committee are asked to note the current position in relation to both. So in terms of the pay award negotiations, the national employer made a final offer to the trade unions of 2.75%, which the unions are now consulting on with their members. Staff have been informed of progress to date and we're not expecting to hear the outcome of that consultation until the end of August at the earliest. But if accepted, we will undertake to implement the pay award in accordance with our usual processes and in line with previous agreement provided through this committee. In terms of changes to employment legislation, so parental bereavement and elements of the Good Work Plan have now been implemented with contracts for casuals updated, contract automation to meet day one requirement implemented and various corporate comms updated accordingly. In terms of consultations, we've had no update on the ethnicity pay gap reporting, exit payment cap, exit payment recovery, ill health, job losses, measures to address one-sided flexibilities, sexual harassment or confidentiality clauses. Whilst not formally responded to the consultation, however, we do know that there are two private members' bills expected, one around the Equal Pay Bill, which will be linked to uncovering the ethnicity pay gap, and also one in relation to public sector exit payment, which will also link to the exit cap, which we've discussed previously. There have been some updates on neonatal leave and we're expecting new consultation in terms of the right to give carers one week's unpaid leave. And that concludes our short report.
Thank you. Now, I saw, yeah, councillor House, Keith.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen. Just to declare an interest really on the 2020 pay award negotiations, because I'm a member of national employers. The timing of that, as Jack has said in the report, is taking quite some while. It's highly unlikely the national employers will be able to meet until at least the middle of September to even consider the union's response. Let alone today and consider for the unions to consider what the national employer's response is. And so we go on. One of the relevant discussions is whether the following year's pay award should be linked in some way to the current year.
Thank you.
Yes. Is there an answer to that point?
I was just giving that information really, which may have helped Jack a lot.
Yeah, no, it was helpful. And we know that our internal processes, once the outcome is notified to us, we know that our internal processes broadly take around two months also. So it's worth bearing that in mind in terms of the timeline, in terms of potential payment for staff.
Christmas if we're lucky, then.
Yeah.
I get very frustrated at the length of time that this takes and occasionally ask questions of the officers.
I mean, it has been a little bit delayed by Covid inevitably, but not a lot because the virtual negotiations picked up again quite quickly.
Okay, good. Okay, are there any other points on this paper? If not, the recommendations are that we note the current position of the national negotiations on the pay award and developments in relation to legislation. Kevin, would you be able to do your stuff again? Give us a vote capability? Now that's, there we go, yeah. Okay, so that's up in the chat, so we're invited to go for against or abstain. I see four people, five people. Five people, we've stuck at five. Six. Okay. And it's 100% four, so those recommendations are carried. The next item is not necessary, the exclusion of the press and public, because with your permission, I rolled in the confidential minute with the previous discussion. So that brings us to the end of the meeting. We've been going an hour and a half on the major paper I think we did justice to. That was a very important and very well-received paper. So at half past three, I can close the meeting, which will please the chief executive because he has another meeting to go to, I've just noted. Thank you all very much for attending.